Buenas tardes. Bienvenidos a la reunión regular de la Cámara de la Ciudad de Minneapolis. Mi nombre es Barbara Johnson, presidenta de la Cámara de la Ciudad de Minneapolis. Tenemos una serie de resoluciones y reconocimientos que nos gustaría presentar esta mañana. Tenemos una audiencia realmente completa, así que aprecio a todos los que vinieron aquí. Así que ustedes obtendrán un poco de la comida, algunas de las cosas que están pasando en nuestra ciudad y algunos de los trabajos que se están haciendo en nuestra ciudad. Así que la primera reconocida que tenemos es la reconocida de los estudiantes urbanos. Así que, ¿Miss Francois, o bien, ¿Miss Corbel? El presidente de la Cámara de la Ciudad, Yang, es el presidente del Comité de Emergencia de Derechos Civiles. Por favor, déjenme pensar aquí. Emergencia y Comité de Gestión de Derechos Civiles. Así que él está acompañándome para invitar a estos estudiantes urbanos que han estado sirviendo en departamentos en nuestra ciudad. Así que, ¿Miss Corbel?
Buenas tardes. Gracias, presidente de la Cámara y miembros de la Cámara de la Ciudad. En primer lugar, mi nombre es Velma Corbel. Soy el director del Departamento de Derechos Civiles de Minneapolis. Y quiero decirles, en primer lugar, gracias al oficio del fiscal de la Cámara y a la Cámara de la Ciudad. Esta mañana tuvimos una muy buena recepción en el salón 333, al lado del oficio del jefe de la alcaldía, para el grupo de estudiantes urbanos que se está desplazando. Y es un momento muy bueno para ellos conocer a la Cámara de la Ciudad y también para que ustedes sepan un poco de ellos. Así que el programa de estudiantes urbanos fue iniciado hace tres años como un programa de desarrollo de liderazgo para atraer a diversos estudiantes de secundaria y estudiantes de graduación a la ciudad para proporcionar experiencia en el trabajo y oportunidades de trabajo para ellos para que cuando se retiren y se renuncien en la ciudad, tengamos una red de personal involucrado que podría presumiblemente asumir algunas de esas vacaciones mientras suceden. Y hemos sido muy afortunados. Iniciamos el programa hace tres años con ocho estudiantes urbanos y estamos a punto de tener un total de 36 estudiantes urbanos este año. Tenemos 22 estudiantes urbanos trabajando en la ciudad de Minneapolis, siete, cinco en las escuelas públicas de Minneapolis, siete en el Consejo Metropolitano, uno en Twin Cities United Way y uno en PCL Construction. Y hemos tenido algunos éxitos en el programa de estudiantes urbanos a lo largo del tiempo también. Hemos tenido diez de los estudiantes urbanos que en realidad han graduado de la universidad, ya sea en la universidad secundaria o en la universidad de grado, o en realidad trabajan. Seis de los diez están en realidad trabajando en la ciudad ahora mismo. Así que nuestro plan es invitar a estos individuos de vuelta a trabajar en el sector público, específicamente en la ciudad, es trabajar. Todavía tenemos unos pocos departamentos en la ciudad que no han hosted a un estudiante urbano, pero todos ellos han tenido al menos uno o dos. Y este año en el Departamento de Derechos Civiles, en realidad hostiguamos a tres estudiantes urbanos para ayudarnos con algunos de los proyectos que tenemos ahí. Karen Francois, quien es la coordinadora del programa de estudiantes urbanos, me ha indicado que hay varias agencias fuera de la ciudad que tiene en su lista de deseos de hostigar a estudiantes urbanos en los próximos años porque realmente se trata de llenar una red de potencia de empleados que pueden trabajar en el sector público. Así que ya está hablando con el condado de Hennepin, la ciudad de Saint Paul, el condado de Ramsey, el estado de Minnesota, la Junta de la Parca y varias otras ciudades en la región. Así que los estudiantes urbanos han tomado como un fuego salvaje y eso es exactamente lo que esperábamos. Así que no tengo muchos comentarios preparados. Solo quería decirle una vez más gracias y los estudiantes han sido increíbles. Muchas gracias a los departamentos que los han hosted. Y mi comentario final sería, mientras miro alrededor a los estudiantes urbanos, cuánta apoyo ha tenido la Cámara de la Ciudad al programa, cuánta apoyo han tenido los departamentos a los estudiantes urbanos, solo puedo pensar que cada otra internación desea que fuera un programa de estudiante urbano. Así que muchas gracias a todos por su apoyo y luego vamos a ir con el programa.
¿Tenemos certificados para...? Bien, ¿y son...? Sí, ¿por qué no, por favor? ¿Presidente Yang, quieres decir algunas palabras?
Creo que este programa es un programa maravilloso y si podemos de alguna manera transitar estos estudiantes urbanos a trabajos en la ciudad o en el estado o en cualquier otro lugar, eso sería genial. Así que estoy ansioso por verlos todos.
Gracias. Bien, entonces, el certificado... Bien, ¿cuáles de ustedes han ido hacia este lado para que puedan entrar en la cámara? Oh, algunos están viniendo hacia ese lado. Bien, 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 buena idea.
La Cámara de la Ciudad ha preparado certificados para honrar y reconocer a los estudiantes urbanos por el trabajo precioso que han hecho aquí en la ciudad de Minneapolis y en nuestras organizaciones de socio. Y voy a leer sus nombres alfabeticamente y el presidente de la Cámara, Johnson, y el jefe de la alcaldía, Hodges, te darán sus certificados. Así que empezaremos con Feta Abera. ¿En adelante? Y Nicole Bachnight. Nicole trabaja en PCL Construction y Feta trabaja aquí en la ciudad. Yolanda Buckhart, quien trabaja en el Consejo Metropolitano. Creo que el favorito de la alcaldía de Hodges es Jasmine Carey, quien ha estado trabajando con ella este verano. Hannah Cho, quien trabaja en el Consejo Metropolitano. Regina Cole, quien trabaja aquí en la ciudad de Minneapolis. Jamil Corbin, quien ha estado trabajando en el departamento de la policía aquí en la ciudad de Minneapolis durante los últimos dos veranos. Malik Day, quien ha estado trabajando aquí en la ciudad de Minneapolis. Maryam DeMello, quien estoy seguro que es el favorito de la alcaldía de la ciudad de la estudiante urbana, quien ha estado trabajando en el oficio de la alcaldía de la ciudad durante los dos veranos. Sanjay Dur, quien ha estado trabajando en el Consejo Metropolitano. Antonio Elias, quien ha estado trabajando en las escuelas públicas de Minneapolis. Isaac Galini Matias, quien ha estado trabajando aquí en la ciudad de Minneapolis. Faith Jackson, quien es la directora favorita de la estudiante urbana de Corbel. Ha estado trabajando con ella en el Departamento de Derechos Civiles. Eugene Kelly, quien es mi favorito, quien ha estado trabajando conmigo en la compliance de contratos. Por cierto, realmente os quiero igualmente. Ashley Kemp, quien ha estado trabajando con el superintendente Bernadita Johnson en las escuelas públicas de Minneapolis. Ikram Kaliso, quien ha estado trabajando aquí en la ciudad de Minneapolis. Melissa Lacy, ciudad de Minneapolis. Maria Maddox, ciudad de Minneapolis. Mariah Mendoza, Met Council. Hamza Musse, Met Council. Nick No, ciudad de Minneapolis. Jeremiah Osakpo, creo que es el favorito de la cámara de la alcaldía de Glidden. Vermel Peewee, quien ha estado trabajando en la ciudad de Minneapolis en el Departamento de Policía. Patricia Poyer, ciudad de Minneapolis. Michael Rangunwala, Twin Cities United Way. Brittany Rice, quien ha estado trabajando en la ciudad de Minneapolis y continuará trabajando con nosotros en el Departamento de Derechos Civiles. Jolene Rotich, quien ha estado trabajando aquí en la ciudad. Vivian Scott, ¿está aquí? No creo que esté aquí. Ha estado trabajando en el Met Council. Simon Samir, ciudad de Minneapolis. Oficina de Quincy y también con el presidente de la Cámara, Gordon. Retana Sengsuli Chan. Retana, espero que lo haga justicia. Ciudad de Minneapolis. Nabil Shuna. Nabil, ¿has estado trabajando con las escuelas públicas? Sí, las escuelas públicas de Minneapolis. Leila Suliman, las escuelas públicas de Minneapolis. Erica Vélez, ha estado trabajando en la ciudad de Minneapolis. Kaveng, quien es un estudiante urbano regresado trabajando en las escuelas públicas de Minneapolis. Manir Vaughn, quien conozco, Toni Newborn, esa es su favorita. Ha estado trabajando con nosotros en Derechos Civiles. Y, por último, Jeffrey Weinhegen, quien ha estado trabajando con mi hermana en el Met Council y él dice que es el mejor jefe de todos los tiempos. Eso es todo. Tenemos a varios de nuestros estudiantes urbanos que permanecerán durante el año escolar y trabajaran partidario en los departamentos que estaban sirviendo este verano. Así que muchas gracias por reconocer el gran trabajo que están haciendo.
Lo que diría sobre el programa de estudiante urbano es que ahora que he trabajado con un estudiante urbano, Jasmine ha sido genial todo el verano, pero los únicos pensamientos segundos que tengo es que la olvidaré mucho cuando ella se vaya. Y así, el gran trabajo que ha podido hacer y que simplemente no puede ser ignorado, y no lo ha sido, es que el trabajo que todos han hecho y el servicio que han podido ofrecer a los lugares donde han estado trabajando no puede ser subestimado, no puede ser exagerado. Ustedes han hecho un gran trabajo para nosotros y realmente lo aprecio mucho y realmente aprecio el trabajo que has hecho. Probablemente trabajaré con estudiantes urbanos de nuevo. Solo tendré que prepararme para la pérdida al final del verano o al final del año. Así que muchas gracias a todos. Felicidades y buen trabajo.
Bueno, bastante grupo impresionante, gracias, gracias. Así que nuestra próxima reconocida está patrocinada por la alcaldía de Alondra Cano. Así que va a presentar el general de la Cámara de la Ciudad de México, quien está aquí para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy contentos. Muchas gracias por unirse a nosotros y honrando a Emilio Zapata Day. Gracias.
Sí, bastante tarde aquí. Así que, si me permiten, que Alberto Fierro, el consellero mexicano, se una aquí. Pueden sentarse junto a nosotros. Y también vamos a tener a Ana Columba y sus invitadas del Programa de Ciudad de Minneapolis de la Cámara de la Ciudad de Minneapolis. Y también vamos a tener el Coop Mercado Central, el Consejo de Directores, que están aquí. Por favor, vengan. Gerardo, por favor, venga aquí. Aide, el vicepresidente. Y tenemos otro amigo aquí, Laura. María, si quisiera unirse a nosotros, por favor hágalo. Disculpen si el micrófono viene y va aquí. Bien, ahora no está brilando. Ahora no está brillando. Bien, así que lo que haré aquí es leer la resolución que hemos reunido para honrar a Emilio Zapata Day y luego permitiremos a la gente dar algunos comentarios después. Así que reconociendo el 16 de agosto como Emilio Zapata Day, mientras que Emilio Zapata Salazar, que nació en una familia indígena mixta de Nahuatl y de origen español en el estado de Morelos, México en 1879, es reconocido como héroe nacional de la Revolución Mexicana de 1910 a 1920. Y mientras Zapata capturó la simpatía y el apoyo del pueblo mexicano y movilizó contra el dictador duro Borfirio Díaz después de más de tres décadas de represión, severa pobreza y injusticias sociales; y mientras zapata mismo era un agricultor que luchó por la reforma social y agraria hasta que fue asesinado en 1919; y mientras zapatas imagen icónica con un gran pelo negro y estilo charro tradicional, un sombrero amplio, pantalones con botones de plata, una camisa alrededor de su cuello y guantes de cartera a su cintura, se ha convertido en un potente símbolo de justicia social y su legado continúa siendo reconocido y celebrado en México debido a su valentía en definir a los pueblos y al pueblo indígena. Mientras que Minneapolis se ha convertido en hogar de muchas personas de Morelos, México, especialmente la ciudad de Azochapan, que, como diré, han revitalizado la calle East Lake significativamente. Y mientras Cuernavaca, la capital de Morelos, se convirtió en una ciudad de amistad a la ciudad de Minneapolis en 2008; mientras que la Plaza Centenario en la calle Lake y la 12ª Avenida posee una escultura de bronce de Emilio Zapata, que fue un regalo del gobierno de Morelos y es un importante lugar para la comunidad latina que celebra la relación entre México y Minnesota en general y Minneapolis y Cuernavaca específicamente. Y mientras la presencia de Plaza Centenario en la calle Lake en una comunidad latina altamente concentrada en el sur de Minneapolis da conciencia de lo que la revolución significa para los mexicanos y proporciona la oportunidad para todos los residentes de aprender sobre la historia y la importancia de Emilio Zapata. Mercado Central fue establecido en 1999, es un mercado latino prosperante en el cuarto de la calle Lake y Bloomington Avenida y está basado en un modelo cooperativo de fomento del desarrollo de las pequeñas empresas. Y mientras el sábado 16 de agosto de 2014, el consulado mexicano y los miembros cooperativos de Mercado Central cohostearán una celebración de la comunidad de lo que hubiese sido el cumpleaños de 135 de Emilio Zapata y el 15º aniversario de la apertura de Mercado Central con una ceremonia y una fiesta en Mercado Central y una procesión a Plaza Centenario. Entonces, sea resuelto que el jefe y la Cámara de la Ciudad de Minneapolis se conocerá el 16 de agosto como Emilio Zapata Day.
Buenas tardes a todos. Muchas gracias por haberme aquí y por hacer esta reconocida, jefe. Creo que es muy importante en términos de interculturalidad, todas las conexiones culturales entre Minneapolis y Morelos en particular. Y qué símbolo mejor que Zapata, el peleador por la justicia, que todavía es un grande símbolo en México y para el mundo, que la justicia puede venir y que los pueblos y la agricultura es importante, pero con la justicia. Así que qué manera maravillosa de celebrar la amistad entre Minneapolis y Cuernavaca y las relaciones entre los mexicanos que viven en Minneapolis y el héroe de nuestra revolución. Muchas gracias.
Gracias. Y solo quiero decir que es un honor increíble trabajar con ustedes en una asociación. Es un enorme recurso para nuestra comunidad tener el Consellero mexicano presente en Minnesota. Algunos estados, algunas ciudades no tienen acceso a tal recurso. Así que es increíble tenerlos aquí como socio cultural económico para ayudar a nuestras comunidades a avanzar. Es un honor tenerlos aquí hoy. Y le pasaremos a Ana.
Gracias. Bueno, solo quiero decir gracias a todos los miembros de la Cámara y al jefe de la ciudad por permitirnos la oportunidad de la comunidad latina, especialmente en la calle Lake. Trabajaron muy duro para mejorar el negocio para la economía de este país. Y también a las ciudadanas amistades, fuimos un grupo de empresarios que viajaron a la ciudad de Cuernavaca para hablar con el gobernador. Nos visitó hace ocho años y nos dio el regalo del símbolo estatutio de los latinos trabajando duro aquí en Minneapolis. Gracias.
Gracias por esta oportunidad. Soy el presidente del Coop Mercado Central.
Estamos trabajando quince años en la cooperativa en el desarrollo comercial e integral latino de toda la calle Lake. Ha sido un ejemplo del Mercado Central. Gracias por esa oportunidad que nos da la ciudad de Minneapolis.
Y estamos aquí representando a los comerciantes del Coop Mercado Central que han estado integrando a la comunidad latina y haciendo desarrollo de negocios en la calle Lake. Gracias a la ciudad de Minneapolis por esta oportunidad aquí hoy.
Bueno, voy a dar las resoluciones a la alcaldía de Cano y ella puede distribirlas. Pero realmente quiero decir, ustedes saben cuánto nuestra ciudad ha sido recompensada por la presencia de la comunidad hispana, la comunidad latina en Minneapolis. Es solo un cambio fenomenal para alguien que ha vivido aquí toda su vida y ver la vibrancia en el sentido del negocio, creo, es lo que es tan notable. Así que gracias por todo su trabajo y gracias una vez más por unirse a nosotros hoy. Gracias. Y la próxima resolución que tenemos y certificado de honor aquí es una resolución whimsical, deliciosa, entretenida para nuestra ciudad. Y voy a presentar a la alcaldía de Linae Palmasano, quien describirá lo que estamos reconociendo aquí hoy y el diversión y el entretenimiento que trae a la vida de esta ciudad.
Gracias. Si me permiten, invito a todos los niños aquí en la sala a que vengan mientras digo unas palabras y luego leeremos la resolución. Nuestra ciudad necesita ser un lugar donde crecen los jóvenes. Y las vidas jóvenes no son compuestas de padres solos, sino de toda la experiencia que tengan. Los estudiantes urbanos son un gran ejemplo de eso esta mañana. En la presentación de presupuesto de ayer, el jefe dijo que necesitamos crear una ciudad invitando a todos los niños. No podía estar de más. Así que simbolicamente, creo que eso empieza justo aquí en la Cámara de Ciudad. ¿Quién es mejor para hacer eso que una persona joven? Mi interna de cuarto cuarto. Nuestro interno este verano ha ampliado sus habilidades en la planificación de la comunidad alrededor de la cuarta cuarto. Eso es lo que estudia. Pero, le digo, sus esfuerzos para crear un tour para los jóvenes podrían ser su proyecto más importante. Esta es una invitación abierta para todos los niños de Minneapolis para unirse a nosotros en nuestros nuevos tours de la Cámara de Ciudad que nuestra persona joven creó. En el futuro, queremos más grupos de estudiantes, más organizaciones de jóvenes que vengan y vean lo que es este lugar. Esos tours empiezan hoy y espero que todos ustedes tomen uno. Espero que todos ustedes tomen uno después de esto. Y queremos honrar a alguien que ha estado escribiendo miles de cartas cada año durante exactamente 20 años. Tom, como se conoce, ha hecho un trabajo increíble de personificar el tipo de participación que estamos buscando en nuestra ciudad. Este honorario es más que sobre un pequeño elfo, pero es una oportunidad para crear un sentido más fuerte de participación de la comunidad. También recibe todos los edades en la Cámara de Ciudad. Durante las últimas semanas, nuestro oficio ha recibido algunas historias increíbles de los residentes que van desde las reglas del balón de elfos a los chiquillos que juegan en nuestro querido amigo. Nuestro querido amigo ha tenido que defender su terreno en el camino pedestrianal por el río a lo largo de los años. Muchas de estas historias vienen de recuerdos de la infancia que han tenido hace muchos años y algunas vienen de la semana pasada. También escribí a los elfos por primera vez hace unas semanas. Pueden encontrarlo en mi correo electrónico. Pero solo quería decir que estas historias son emocionantes, inspiradoras y todas son divertidas. Así que en reconocimiento al servicio y compromiso de la ciudad de Minneapolis, estoy feliz de presentar esta resolución. Y basado en esta nota de regreso de los elfos, la voy a presentar a ustedes hoy y aquí está por qué. Esta es la nota que recibí. Realmente estoy honrada por todo el fastidio por ser simplemente un elfo de árbol ordinario con un pensional para escribirle. Tú eres demasiado amable conmigo. Me encantaría aceptar esta honra en persona, pero temo que algún humano podría pisarme y todo el entusiasmo y mis ganas saldrían corriendo de mi boca. Así que gracias, pero no gracias. Idealmente, me gustaría que Batman aceptara por mí, pero si no está disponible, un grupo de niños lo hará, o quizás chipmunks. La resolución lee: "Mientras que hay muchas buenas formas de estar involucrado y formar parte de las comunidades que forman la ciudad de Minneapolis; mientras la participación y la participación de la comunidad no viene con requisitos de edad o tamaño particulares; y mientras durante 20 años, Tom, el elfo de la playa Harriet, también conocido como el señor pequeño, ha traído alegría a los niños de todos los edades, de dos a 92, al encantarnos todos con sus historias de pastillas de minnow, carriles en el gato Nickerson, helado azul, la gran elfa Martha y la princesa elfa Altalucia; y mientras el elfo de la playa Harriet no es un gnomo, no es un trollo y no es un cerdo, sino un elfo que ha contribuido fortemente a hacer que Minneapolis sea un lugar especial y ha traído la alegreza nacional a nuestra ciudad; mientras el elfo de la playa Harriet no ha buscado ni fama ni fortuna al revelar su identidad, resistiendo la continua felicidad de mostrarse mientras nos enseña sobre la vida y el amor y el amor y la alegría; mientras el elfo de la playa Harriet cree en nuestra ciudad y vive en los corazones y mentes y almas de aquellos que creen en él mientras muestra a todos que todos tienen un rol a jugar en hacer que Minneapolis sea un gran lugar para vivir; mientras el elfo aspira a que la ciudad continúe siendo un hogar para los soñadores, artistas y visionarios; y mientras aunque de edad indeterminada en años humanos o en años de elfos, el 15 de agosto es en realidad el cumpleaños del elfo de la playa Harriet; entonces, sea resuelto por la Cámara de Ciudad de la ciudad de Minneapolis que honremos a Tom, el elfo de la playa Harriet, por sus 20 años de servicio único a Minneapolis y compromiso con los niños de todos los edades. Gracias."
Muy, muy, muy bien, muy bien. Siempre me gusta cuando los niños pequeños hacen algo para ellos y ellos miran a ustedes como, ¿qué estoy supuesta a hacer? Pero gracias a todos por unirse a nosotros hoy. Es tan hermoso verte y tan bueno para el futuro de nuestra ciudad. Muchas gracias.
order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
Worsami is absent. Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Glidden.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 12 members present.
Councilmember Worsami had a medical emergency in his family, so he won't be joining us today. We have a quorum of the council present. Next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Any changes or additions to the agenda? Seeing none, motion to approve is in order.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 1st, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have referrals of petitions and communications or reports of the city officers to proper committees and departments.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the committee of the whole, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Glidden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have two items on the agenda for today that I'll move for approval. The first is the appointment of our city coordinator, and this would, action would be to approve the appointment by the executive committee of Spencer Kronk to the appointed position of city coordinator for a two-year term beginning January 2nd, should say 2014, or 20, 2014, excuse me, got confused reading this, and ending January 2nd, 2016. And item number two is, is regarding the city Minneapolis Medical Plan, the action will be to authorize execution of a fully insured contract with Medica as a selected provider of the city's medical plan benefit for a period of three years beginning January 1st, 2015, with an option to extend the contract for up to two additional one-year periods. And I will move both items. And I will note, as I do, that we are joined by Mr. Kronk and welcome him here, and I know the mayor's here, and I'm certain that she wants to make comments.
Okay. Councilmember Glidden has moved the committee of the whole report, which includes the coordinator appointment and the city's medical plan. Madam Mayor, did you wish to speak?
I'd be happy to make a couple of comments. Thank you, Madam President. I'm not sure what else there needs to be said about Mr. Kronk. I think the folks who testified at the public hearing were very ably, or, you know, very, took their time to come down here and talk about how great he is, frankly, and how great he is to work with and what a great manager he is and the great, you know, and the work that he's done at the state and the difference it's made for the state. And so, I, you know, I don't have much more to say beyond, I believe Spencer Kronk will be a fabulous city attorney, a city attorney, city coordinator. Didn't mean to confer degrees, I don't have the power to confer. Will be, will be a wonderful city coordinator and help guide us through this into the next period of Minneapolis and our success and our future, and I look forward to working with him in that capacity.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I also wanted to make a comment about the appointment of Spencer Kronk, if that's okay. I've had the opportunity to work with four different city coordinators in 16 years on the city council, and each of them have brought to the city something that has been enduring and positive about their time here. Kathleen O'Brien had great vision and amazing passion for the good that government can do. She led us through the convention center building, the expansion of the convention center, the expansion of our downtown library, and many other civic projects because of her incredible belief in what cities can do. And then I had the good fortune to work with John Moyer, who brought to us a sense of incredible financial reality. He was one who felt that finances should dictate all other decisions in the city and getting our finance in order, finances in order for him was job one. And then came Stephen Bosacker, someone who came from state government, who had a focus on results. He was able to take the good of Kathleen O'Brien and John Moyer and turn it into a way for us to believe in what we did and explain to other people through the results process what we did. He also was a master at the reinvention of cities and a believer in big cities doing great things. And then over the past couple of years, we've been, had the good fortune to work with Paul Lawson, someone who brought to us a really incredible sense of process and collegiality. He was one of the people that others went to because of his very friendly demeanor and his focus on finance process and results. And so that brings us to Spencer Kronk. These are very big shoes that you'll have the opportunity to fill. This is like being the city manager of a $1.2 billion corporation. And I feel that Spencer, more than anyone that could have been suggested, really brings the great qualities of those who stood in these shoes before him to be able to help our city now move into what will be the new normal. I think that there is something to be said for someone who their employees really respect, someone who has been able to work in a cabinet type of environment with an elected structure, and someone who loves this city but has an incredible worldview because he's lived somewhere else. And so I, I think that this is a brilliant appointment. I think he has the stature, experience, and personality to take the best of all of the people that I've had the good fortune to work with and carry our city forward. I want to congratulate the mayor on picking Spencer for this role, and I very much look forward to working with you.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, and I just wanted to make a couple of brief comments. I did want to confess, in case I hadn't mentioned it earlier, that I was somewhat surprised and disappointed when Paul Lawson wasn't reappointed. I enjoyed working with him immensely and believed that stability in the coordinator's office was very important. And then if, I was also, I've been kind of frustrated because we haven't had a city coordinator, and a lot of times we've had discussions and said, well, wait till we get a city coordinator and then we can, we can get to work on that and get going on that. But now I find that I'm incredibly hopeful. I have enormous expectations. I think we are set now to get to work on some of those projects. I commend the mayor on this appointment. I was very impressed at the public hearing, and I've been very impressed with my colleagues and what they've had to say about the appointment, and also in my meeting with Mr. Kronk. So, I think Councilmember Goodman is right when she says there's big shoes to fill, but I also think she's, she's saying that you get to be yourself when you're here, you get to play to your strengths, and I think it's going to be a great fit for the city. And I already can tell, I guess I shouldn't direct my comments to the audience, but I can already tell that the, the new city coordinator is ready and willing and is going to really put his heart and soul into this, and I really appreciate that, so I'm enthusiastically supporting this appointment.
Any further discussion on the committee of the whole report? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Congratulations, Mr. Kronk. Next, we have on the agenda the Community Development and Regulatory Services Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Community Development Committee is bringing forward five items for approval this morning. Item number one is our liquor business and gambling license applications. Item number two is business license conditions for Scratch Bar LLC. Item number three is a change to our commercial hood exhaust cleaning ordinance. Item four is authorizing staff to analyze a tax increment financing district for 800 West Broadway. And number five is adding two different things, pedal cars and transportation network companies to our administrative fine schedule. With that, I'll move items one through five for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the Community Development Regulatory Services Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Election and Rules Committee, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam President. We have one item on the agenda for today, which is to increase the pay authorized for our election judges. I move approval of this item.
Councilmember Frye has moved the Election Committee Report. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
I need to be recorded as not voting due to a conflict of interest.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes with one abstention.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee Report, with that committee's chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing three items forward for consideration. The first is passage of ordinances, three of them amending Title 10 of the Food Code, which is repealing sections related to bread, eggs, and water for drinking and domestic purposes. They're unnecessary and outdated parts of the code, issues that are already covered in state law. The second item is to approve the city appointment of Margaret Reinhardt from the 10th Ward to the Minneapolis Public Health Advisory Committee. And the third item is to authorize increases in our contracts with Community Action of Minneapolis and Project for Pride and Living to provide healthy home services for the city. And I will move all three items.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management. I can say the committee's name now? And that committee's chaired by Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. We have three items today. The first item is to authorize a contract agreement with the First 48 Television Documentary Series producers for Minneapolis Police Department to be highlighted in a television series for one of their episodes, or maybe a few more. Number two is to authorize a joint powers agreement with the Minnesota Bureau of Criminal Apprehension not to exceed $714,000 for the MPD to support four DNA analysts to work on MPD cases. The third item is to authorize an agreement with the Minnesota Vikings Football LLC for law enforcement services in the neighborhoods adjacent to TCF Stadium by the MPD during the 2014 Minnesota Vikings Football Season Games, with expenses reimbursed by the Minnesota Vikings. And I will move all three items for approval.
Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety, Emergency Management, Civil Rights Report. Anyone want to pull anything off? Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works, with that committee's chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards eight items today. Item one is the Skyway Construction Agreement Amendment. It's authorized execution of that amendment with the agreement of Skyway Construction Operation Maintenance easements in order to allow the nines located at 917-927 Niclet Mall to connect to the existing Skyway system. Item two is set impact fees for the Lynn Lake Municipal Parking Lots for the period September 1, 2014 through August 31, 2015. Item three is the passage of a resolution authorized an execution of an interagency agreement with the Minnesota Department of Transportation for participation in a force account in advanced construction for the St. Anthony Parkway Bridge over the North Town Yard. Item four is approve an application for a large block event to be held September 14, 2014, to operate outside the requirements set forth in the section 455-330 of the code. Item five is the Niclet Mall Construction Management Services, authorize issuance of an RFP to solicit proposals from qualified vendors for construction management of the Niclet Mall redesign and reconstruction project. The following items will refer to the Ways and Means Committee. Item six is accept, it's regarding the 36th Street Bike Way Project, accept the Hennepin County Bicycle Improvement Fund grant of $55,450 to cover 50% of the cost for that project, authorize execution of a corporate agreement with Hennepin County, and pass a resolution amending the 2014 capital budget to establish and increase the appropriation for that project. Item seven is to accept the following low bids for public impound towing through June 30, 2016, with the options to extend through 2018 and 2020 at the sole option of the city. Those districts and companies are listed, and I will note that there was considerable discussion about how we would monitor their operations moving forward, and there have been contract adjustments to make improvements in, in those operations moving forward. Item eight is the acceptance of two low bids, low bid for Train USA Incorporated for the Skyway Air Handler Unit Replacement Project and the low bid of Kilmer Electric Company Incorporated for the Hiawatha LRT Trail Lighting Project. I move all items for approval, Madam President.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have Transportation and Public Works, with that committee's chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards eight items today. Item one is the Skyway Construction Agreement Amendment. It's authorized execution of that amendment with the agreement of Skyway Construction Operation Maintenance easements in order to allow the nines located at 917-927 Niclet Mall to connect to the existing Skyway system. Item two is set impact fees for the Lynn Lake Municipal Parking Lots for the period September 1, 2014 through August 31, 2015. Item three is the passage of a resolution authorized an execution of an interagency agreement with the Minnesota Department of Transportation for participation in a force account in advanced construction for the St. Anthony Parkway Bridge over the North Town Yard. Item four is approve an application for a large block event to be held September 14, 2014, to operate outside the requirements set forth in the section 455-330 of the code. Item five is the Niclet Mall Construction Management Services, authorize issuance of an RFP to solicit proposals from qualified vendors for construction management of the Niclet Mall redesign and reconstruction project. The following items will refer to the Ways and Means Committee. Item six is accept, it's regarding the 36th Street Bike Way Project, accept the Hennepin It's authorized execution of that amendment with the agreement of Skyway Construction Operation Maintenance easements in order to allow the nines located at 917-927 Niclet Mall to connect to the existing Skyway system. Item two is set impact fees for the Lynn Lake Municipal Parking Lots for the period September 1, 2014 through August 31, 2015. Item three is the passage of a resolution authorized an execution of an interagency agreement with the Minnesota Department of Transportation for participation in a force account in advanced construction for the St. Anthony Parkway Bridge over the North Town Yard. Item four is approve an application for a large block event to be held September 14, 2014, to operate outside the requirements set forth in the section 455-330 of the code. Item five is the Niclet Mall Construction Management Services, authorize issuance of an RFP to solicit proposals from qualified vendors for construction management of the Niclet Mall redesign and reconstruction project. The following items were referred to the Ways and Means Committee. Item six is accept it regarding the 36th Street Bike Way project, accept the Hennepin County Bicycle Improvement Fund grant of $55,450 to cover 50% of the cost for that project, authorize execution of a corporate agreement with Hennepin County, and pass a resolution amending the 2014 capital budget to establish and increase the appropriation for that project. Item seven is to accept the following low bids for public impound towing through June 30, 2016, with the options to extend through 2018 and 2020 at the sole option of the city. Those districts and companies are listed, and I will note that there was considerable discussion about how we would monitor their operations moving forward, and there have been contract adjustments to make improvements in those operations moving forward. Item eight is the acceptance of two low bids, low bid for Train USA Incorporated for the Skyway Air Handler Unit Replacement Project, and the low bid of Kilmer Electric Company Incorporated for the Hiawatha LRT Trail Lighting Project. I move all items for approval, Madam President.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation and Public Works report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Zoning and Planning Committee report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. We have five items today from the Zoning and Planning Committee. Item number one is regarding Linden Crossing, to deny an appeal and approve a number of applications, as well as adopt the findings of fact as prepared by the city attorney. Councilmember Palmasano has a motion which adds a condition of approval to the conditional use permit, and you have that in front of you. Item number two is to approve two appointments to the Minneapolis Arts Commission. Item number three is to approve a petition for Riverton Community Housing to allow for construction of a new residential building by rezoning from R5 to OR3. Item number four is adoption and approval of the Marcy Homes Neighborhood Master Plan and Dinkytown Business District Plan, as well as amending the policy guidance into our city's comprehensive plan. And item number five is staff direction to prepare comments on the Mississippi River Corridor Critical Area Draft Rules, which is a process led by the DNR. I will move all five items, including the motion by Councilmember Palmasano.
Councilmember Bender has moved the zoning and planning report, including the motion by Councilmember Palmasano. Did you wish to speak to that, Councilmember Palmasano?
I can.
Okay, why don't you?
Madam Chair, this clarifying condition doesn't amend the committee's findings and all. It simply adds a clarifying condition that was asked for during the public hearing. That states that the fourth story shall be stepped back 12 feet or more from all exterior building walls of the third story, and shall not cover more than 50% of the third-story roof. That has been the intent all along, but it should have been stated in the conditions of the granting of the conditional use permit.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
I wanted to make a comment on number five.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
All right, I appreciate that. And this is a comment on the Mississippi River Corridor Critical Area Draft Rules that the DNR is doing, and it's actually something rather complicated and a little bit obscure, but it has to do with the Mississippi River, which runs right through the 2nd Ward, which is very, very important to my constituents, and I think to the city, and to the region, and of course, to the country. And so these rules are important, and we're looking at them very carefully. When the Zoning and Planning Committee approved their action, the deadline was today to get comments sent in. The deadline has now been extended to September 30. So there was a thought that maybe we could postpone this, but I'm not going to move to do that. I also have some very minor concerns about the comments. There's actually a change that I want to make on the West Bank. The university area is quite a lot like the urban core, and so there was some discussion, and there's a suggestion, and there's a comment that the West Bank area near the river should be treated more like the urban core, which allows a lot more development. The maps that were initially provided, though, had the university area extending all the way to Franklin Avenue, and across from Franklin Avenue, then it turned into a river neighborhood district. That doesn't really reflect what's going on. Now, the Seward Neighborhood District actually extends across Franklin, goes a few blocks all the way to 26th. In our staff comments, we are talking about changing that to what's called a River-Town Crossing District. I think it should just extend the River Neighborhood District up there. I'm going to work with staff on these comments. My understanding is that the council action actually directs them to complete the comments and submit them, but didn't approve them specifically. But I did want to highlight that for folks. There's also discussions that are going on with the Park Board right now about some of the comments that they want to make, and they want to make sure to be able to have park down there, but also when they have park, to have it a uniquely urban park. So if they end up deciding that it's in their best interest to build something within 100 feet of the setback, whatever it might be, they're allowed to do that because of the activities that we might want at the river, and I support that as long as it's a public park. So my position right now is that these comments could be sent in, and maybe with some refinement and discussion from council members, and see if there's some small, minor tweaks like the one I suggested with staff. But I also think we should seriously consider, and I would advocate, that we submit future comments as we continue discussions with the Park Board. The one issue about this urban park district idea is the Park Board came up with it a little bit later on, and it's now getting put into their comments, so we need time to look at it. Luckily, the extension gives us that time. I'm not going to move a staff direction now, but I'm just going to share that I think we need to then keep this option open and continue working with the Park Board, and we may even find, after we learn more about what other people have commented on the 15th and are working on, that we might want to make some future comments. I have a lot of sympathy for the comments that we've got from Above the Falls Group and also the Friends of the Mississippi River. I intend to submit my individual comments so that I can share those and maybe highlight some differences and similarities from other comments. I suspect other council members might be submitting their own comments, too, and I encourage people to do that, and all the groups out there and others to do it as well.
Councilmember Goodman. Oh, okay. Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam President. My thing is not working presently, so thank you, Councilmember Goodman. I generally agree with Cam's sentiment. You know, we have a serious interest right now in the city in protecting the riverfront and preserving the ecological sustainability for future generations, to connecting the trail all the way along its banks. You know, we also have an interest in the city of being flexible, of being able to change quickly and adapt, and that's one of the pieces that I've found most impressive. You know, everybody talks about, when I entered office, they talk about the pace of government, and the pace of government is exceedingly slow. Well, at the city, you know, for the most part, I've found it's been anything but. We can make quick alterations, and those alterations are oftentimes to, or are always, in my opinion, they can be to the benefit of the community, and they can be, in this case, to the benefit of the riverfront. I think there's some false, there's some incorrect perceptions about what the DNR rules can do and what they cannot do. First of all, they can't halt development legally. Development really lies in the hands of ownership. If we're going to halt development, that means either the city and/or the Park Board actually has to purchase the parcel. So I don't want to give off any false impressions that no matter what these DNR rules are going forward, that that suddenly means that we're going to have, you know, an acre and a half of green space on both sides of the river going forward. I also want to talk about the proposed boundary for the new district and the regional park, which is often subject to change. I would be a little bit hesitant to agree to a specific park boundary right now, because it could present us with problems later. We had a lot of difficulty with, for instance, the Shear Brothers site. This is a site that will be of tremendous benefit to the community going forward, and will help sustain that riverfront access, but because it was outside of the boundaries, it was difficult to ensure that that spot would be green space. Well, I really appreciate what AFCCAC has done here, because they highlight the conclusions and the goals that I definitely share. So right now, we're sort of playing between, one, making sure that we have sustainable park space for the long term, and, two, making sure that our comments to the DNR have some oomph behind them. And I think what the AFCCAC proposed, which I think is an excellent suggestion, is that, you know, they say at the very end here, we can submit our comments now and then continue to update as we've had more discussions with the Park and Recreations Board about what exactly this park district means. So, you know, we need to look at it a little bit more, and I know I've been working with both Hila, Mays, and Trysti Munson, and I know Cam and Lisa Bender have as well, and we can continue doing that going forward at an urgent rate.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have any specific comments to the level of detail that we've heard, but just wanted to note that as we discussed this in committee, there was a strong preference from the committee members to, you know, make sure we maintain flexibility in our local land use control and not give over too much authority over our local planning to the state, because we don't know when these rules might be amended in the future. It could be 50 years. And as Councilmember Frye noted, you know, our own land use authority is much more flexible than that. And so I think, you know, staff is very happy to meet with Councilmembers Frye and Gordon and others who may have specific tweaks to our comments. We're also working with the Park Board closely to make sure that our comments, you know, are coordinated and aligned wherever that makes sense. But, you know, this underlying notion of maintaining our local land use authority is important to the city.
Any further discussion on the zoning and planning report? Seeing none, Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have resolutions, and the first is the Honorary Resolution honoring the Lake Harriet Elf for 20 years of building community. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. We also have an honorary resolution recognizing August 16, 2014 as Emiliano Zapata Day. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Under unfinished business, we have an ordinance introduction motion by Councilmember Bender to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the zoning code commercial district for first reading and referral to zoning and planning, amending regulations for secondhand goods stores. Any discussion on that ordinance introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have an ordinance introduction by Councilmember Yang, and he renews his notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the City Council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the civil rights. Oh, this to be deleted, I see. Okay. Requested action is to delete from the agenda. Any discussion on that action? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Under new business, we have an ordinance introduction by Councilmember Quincy. Unanimous consent is required to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to planning and development public housing authority for first reading and referral to the committee of the whole, amending sections related to the public housing authorities transition, their own benefit plan, and administrative services. Any discussion on that ordinance introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have announcements. Anyone have any announcements? Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to, I guess, mention something that just happened yesterday. Apparently, there was a vigil yesterday in Ward Five related to the incidents that have happened in Ferguson, and, you know, the incident escalated to the point where there was, you know, a person that was arrested and taken to the 4th Precinct. And, you know, I guess we're going to hear all these different Facebook posts about what happened, and we're also going to read what happened in PR, but, you know, I just wanted to recognize this, and this is not to glorify the situation at all, it's more so just to recognize that, you know, what happened was the officers made a sort of stop and arrest, and they took the person down to the 4th Precinct, and eventually, some of the protesters went down to the 4th Precincts and, you know, protested as well they should. And the inspector actually took up the case and looked up the law and, you know, actually, I mean, did his work to really figure out, you know, whether a law was violated in that situation. And at the end, the inspector tore the ticket and let the person go. And, you know, in this situation, I mean, I, not, again, not to glorify the situation, but I do want to commend the MPD for actually, you know, admitting to a mistake and just letting the person go in this situation, and making this situation a lot better than maybe it could have been worse. So, you know, I wanted to thank the MPD, but I also wanted to thank the people who were there, that they followed the process, and I think the process worked out well in the end for everyone.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to mention that this Sunday on August 17 will be our largest Open Streets event of the year, which will take place along 22 blocks of Franklin Avenue, and I encourage everybody to come. If you want more information, you can check out OpenStreetsMPLS.com.
Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to make an announcement that I touched on briefly at the Ways and Means Committee. I just wanted to let folks know that the Minneapolis Convention Center was recently awarded the Venue Excellence Award for Convention Centers at the Annual Conference of the International Association of Venue Managers. And the Convention Center was singled out as the best in the world for having displayed a significant emphasis on the development and support of a thriving team culture, evidenced by several initiatives, including the implementation of an internal leadership forum designed to strengthen the current leadership team while fostering the growth of emerging leaders. And it was also singled out for its, as the facility demonstrated, high satisfaction from their customers, significant achievements in sustainability, comprehensive safety and security programs, and substantial service to the community. So I wanted everybody to know about that award, and it's certainly prestigious, and we should be celebrating that fact. Thank you.
Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam President, and I just wanted to invite all of our community members and council colleagues to this Saturday's Mercado Central celebration, and it's 15 years since the inception of the project. It's 32 business owners inside the co-op who are members, have their own board of directors make decisions on how to run the operation. They're really the group and the experiment that proved successful and allowed for other imaginative projects such as the global market to take place. So I would really encourage folks to come out, 12 to 8:00 PM at Lake and Bloomington. There will be music, food, clowns, and we're hoping to do a 5:00 PM honorary ceremony at the Plaza Centenario where the statue, the bronze statue of Emiliano Zapata stands on 12th and Lake Street.
Councilmember Glidden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to talk about an event that will happen on August 27 with an opening reception, and then in a kind of a series that's up after that regarding a now-recognized historic property in Minneapolis, which many know as the Lee House. This council actually recognized the Lee House a few years ago with a resolution, which Councilmember Quincy and I brought forward. The exhibit is called "A Right to Establish a Home," and it was put together by a professor, Greg Donofrio, at the University of Minnesota, who worked with his class on a project to give national designation to the home of, former home of Arthur and Edith Lee. I'm going to read the description for the project. It says, "In August of 1931, Arthur and Edith Lee, a young African-American couple, purchased a home at 4,600 Columbus Avenue South, Minneapolis, in what many considered a white neighborhood. A right to establish a home examines the protests that followed in the context of race and housing in Minneapolis, racism in Minnesota, and the individuals and organizations that defended the Lees, including the NAACP and the distinguished attorney Lena Olive Smith." This was a home that, at the time, they talked about the protests, there were mobs that went into, the thousands, that descended on this home, and this became, I think, almost an incident of forgotten history that was recognized and brought forward by the Neighborhood Association where this home is located. And so this event that starts off, the exhibit, is at Rapsen Hall at the University of Minnesota, and then an exhibit will be up from August 23 of this year through January of 2015, and I encourage people to check it out.
Any further announcements? And I turn my thing off. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make a quick announcement to an annual event going on in my ward and also the wards of Councilmember Gordon and Kano coming up next weekend on the 23rd and 24th. It is the little, or the biggest little neighborhood art crawl in Minnesota. It's the League of Longfellow Artists, the Lola Art Crawl.